Thanks for coming out, everybody. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of our government, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Item number one, approve the agenda. Any additions, suggestions? Dan?
Yes, under water or old business number two, I want to add as an required department discussion.
Okay. Lonnie?
No.
Doug?
I'm good.
Entertaining motion to approve the agenda as amended?
How late do I have motions?
Thanks, Doug. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Item number two, the consent agenda. Questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Lonnie, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Next, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. The unanimous agenda. Okay, item number one, under public hearing, budget levy discussion. So we'll start off with a presentation from Finance Director Nancy.
Sure. Yes, this will be fairly brief. Just to review a few items related to the budget process and the levy. So first, just as a reminder for those of you in attendance, as well as council, the budget is made up of a couple of different components. One is the general levy, which refers to the property taxes and relates to departments like police, department, street administration and whatnot. And that's different than the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds are the funds like water, sewer, electric, storm, liquor, and the cemetery. And the enterprise funds are assumed and operated to be essentially self-sustaining, meaning the fees that are generated should more than cover the expenses related to the operations during the year, but also any such profits or net revenues are kept within the funds to help pay for capital improvements down the line in the future. The one exception is maybe the liquor store. Liquor store created so that we have local control over alcohol consumption, but it's come down to we rarely use it as a way to generate revenue, to help pay for things in the city. We pay for things like police cars and playgrounds and the entryway monuments in the past, and that helps keep the taxes down. And so there are no property taxes that support our enterprise funds. Again, the retain earnings of tax. The transfers, we do have some nominal, nominally speaking, transfers out of enterprise funds. From the electric utility, we transfer funds to pay for the street lighting, so the actual electric cost of the street lighting. You know, we charge all of our utilities to the departments because we really need to know what it costs to run those departments, but then in turn we transfer some funds to cover the cost of the street lighting. And then we take some funds from the liquor store to support a little of the city operations. Okay, so there are other variables outside of our control that can affect the property taxes, increases or decreases. First of all, I need to remind everyone that often a function of an increase in property taxes is because you had an increase in the valuation of your property. Tonight is not the night to discuss that. That happens usually in April, and you need to attend the Board of Appeals or their open book date, which will be sometime in April 2019. So you had the opportunity to look at that way last spring, and here we are, and tonight's about the levy itself, the dollars. It's possibility there could be changes in property class rates. That happens usually at the state level, and we don't have much choice about that. Should there be a loss of local government aid or other state aid changes, it might mean that we have to increase our levy to cover more of city operations. Health and safety is always a concern, and then other programs that might impact city costs, and then overall the cost of inflation or the impact related to inflation. So here's our city budgets and expenses for the coming year. Overall, I don't have a comparative figure, but they increased mostly due to nominal increases in costs and cost increases related to payroll. We have several unions within the city which drive our pay scale, and because that increases, they all experience some kind of increase. So the overall city expense right here, which doesn't include the city's portion of the debt, is about 4.3 million, but it's covered by fees, some of those transfers that we talked about, local government aid, and we as a city receive a million from the state, and then our levy, and that's the operating levy. So if you add the 797,000 relates to the city portion only of the debt levy, then we come to about the 3.1 million. Generally speaking, these are increases. Again, contractually, those are payroll increases. We did add a new full-time police officer, a new full-time street storm position. The arena, R22 is the refrigerant. We'll be mandated by law to change that out. It's a very expensive change out, so we're putting, trying to put away $25,000 a year for 10 years to help cover that conversion when we need it. The cost of the arena is shared 50/50 with each county. Safe routes for school, we're putting away $22,000 a year for four years to pay for that project when that comes. And then our utility rates, no increase in electric utility rates, but water 4.5%, storm 2% and sewer 2%, storm 1%. Okay, so if we took the expenditures for each department, offset it by the fees that they generate, that net expense is what it costs y'all as taxpayers to help pay for those departments, including in that is local government aid. We don't allocate our local government aid to any one department, so we're going to consider it all as what to take with the state aid, the local government aid, and the property tax. And here you get then the breakout of the overall levy plus the LGA and what it costs. So if you follow it around, the list follows around this way. So admin is about 7% of your tax levy with the local government aid. Police is the largest at 27.88%. Streets, almost 13 parks, about 13 capital and others, which also includes unallocated insurance, is about 10. Library is about 8, EDA because of its own special fund, we did list that separately. And then the debt, add about $19,000 net debt, again, is just the street debt, the property tax levy debt. And that also does include the levy related to the fire trucks and the cash and aquatic center. Oh, sorry, I have to pass it around. And this is just the history of our levy increases over the years. See, last year we did have a 0%. 2013, we had a large percent, and that was related to the aquatic center, and there had been a referendum on that. So you can see the percentage increases for none for over the years. Also, too, when we budget, we budget for break even, so we really don't build in any excess, which means if we have any extraordinary costs that come up during the year, we have to somehow find a way to either save or use some of our reserves. This is for 2015, again, here's our 1,080,000 that we're going to get from the state. We often compare ourselves to other cities in the area. We've been in about the same ranking per capita local government aid for years. We are the largest city of all of these, not counting Rochester, but we're right in the middle of the pack. So we need a little more aid than, say, these other cities that are listed here, but a lot less than these here. And so the state has a formula that says how much tax capacity does your city have to provide basic services, and work it in their formula, and then we get a particular amount. I had an original line here. This is 2019 proposed, 2018 proposed. The tax is based on the tax capacity of the city. So for 2019, it's 4,350,000 in sum. Last year it was 3 million. What it comes down is calculating the tax rate in some states that might be considered the mill rate. Minnesota doesn't work with mill rates. When we levy, we levy dollars, so what we ask for in dollars is what we levy. Other states have a mill rate, so no matter what you ask for, they attach a mill rate to the property and calculate it out. Well, this is a better way for us to budget, but some would say, you know, we do the dollars on the front end and then it triples down. But you can see that it decreased from about 78% to 77%. Our proposed levy increase is just under 7%, but if you look at a property tax statement, this did not come out, so we're not really going to look at it. But if you first take what the property value increased, take that out of what the dollar increase was, then what's left over should be our 7% on the city side. Well, because we had an increase in the tax capacity for the city, we had a greater, a bigger pie over which we could spread our tax levy. So on a percentage or on a dollar basis, people see where their tax increased, but it's not to the full tune of our 7% or just under 7% because we grew in our tax capacity. And that's always just a matter of... There are some communities that are able to work with that particular component in budgeting, but our numbers have never been great enough to make a difference that we count on that. So we work strictly from the numbers, whatever do all say we need in dollars is what we ask for, and that's what we get. And that's also pending people paying their property taxes. You know, 10 years ago, we had some issues with sharp falls in tax collections, which were made up subsequently, but it put a little cash strain on those couple of years. So any questions? Do you have questions at any time? Feel free to call or ask, come in, counsel, community, anytime, anytime throughout the year as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Okay, we'll open up the public forum if there's any comments or questions on the budget. Now it'll be time to do that. Come up to the podium, see the meeting address, and make a comment if you'd like. Hearing none, we'll close the public comment period. And there were no questions for Nancy, in fact?
No.
Okay, all right. First, we have on our agenda, resolution approving the 2018 tax levy collectible in 2019. I would make the motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Passing unanimous agreement. Next, we have, since we did the resolution approving the tax levy collectible, and that's based on our budget for 2019. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget for 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I was just going to bring up on the budget there, I was hoping that we could put off a full-time hiring, being we already hired a full-time police officer. The street department, street and storm employee, being we have the rest of our departments full, which haven't been for a year or two, and see what we have there for help utilizing the interdepartmental work, so I'd like to throw that out there.
Okay. Can I just ask a question, a clarification from Nancy, real quick? We just approved the levy. So that resolution was passed for levy.
Yes.
So if we change the budget, the levies?
It doesn't have to change, no.
Okay. Yeah, no, it just seems backwards.
I mean, we, on behalf of our departments, we need to know a budget we need to work for in, to the new year, but the levy can stay the same.
Well, that's what I mean, if we were to...
Yes.
Okay, all right. I think that's right. It just came backwards, maybe. Thank you. Okay. So Doug's got a commentary. Any other comments on that? Makes sense. Originally, that was a part-time ask, and we went to full-time when we had some of the savings from the health insurance, I believe.
I'm not sure what transpired, and I know way back with original discussions, it was full-time. I don't recall what was in the preliminary budget.
Okay. Anything else?
The position was just in the preliminary.
Okay.
And then we, we're basing it on a temporary savings on insurance because we don't have a solid number on next year. But if you add a position, that's pretty solid for...
Yeah, sure. I can see going back to the part-time in that, giving the likelihood of seasonal or part-time, but not necessarily full-time year-round, full-time.
What's the rate for the full-time?
I think it was about, total was, because of split between storm and streets, was about 33,000 with benefits. And so if you went to part-time, it would depend on if you're going 30 hours or 20, but, you know, half of that, so I...
You can have the part-time for less than what the benefits are going to cost on the position, I'll guarantee it.
But that's the levy side I'm talking about.
Right. I don't...
You don't believe that?
Either way, but with some of the one-time things we've got coming up here with paving of 16th, and we're going to have some engineering costs there that we aren't sure what all of that's going to be.
We did budget, the savings of, so we had all those other things, but then the savings we had entered later, but we had to add back in a possible 50,000 or uncovered expenses related to 16th that weren't covered by MSAS or the grant. So it almost offset that. And that'll drop off 2020.
We go the part-time out, is there unemployment expenses that we're going to end up paying?
Yeah, that's always a possibility, or see, more seasonal than part-time is where we run into that, but, you know, it's...
It's just another expense that...
Yeah, but you know, there's talent services like we have in the past, too, so I don't really, it takes care of that.
Then you have to...
Possibly more, but not as much. There's a lot of reserve, but it's the idea of saving it now.
Well...
I was going to say later.
Can we get more input from Charlie, why he...
Wants the full-time?
Full-time? Because he didn't get everything done last year that he wanted.
Right.
You're not going to get everything done with the part-time again, because there, again, seasonal part-time, they're going to come and go when they want.
And in my conversation with Charlie, when I talked to him about this, is yeah, he would love it full-time, but a part-time would help. Didn't get everything done the last two years like they had planned on doing, but they also had an eight-and-a-half million dollar street reconstruction project, but they got pulled away on a lot of one-time things that they won't have next year.
So they've been understaffed in other departments?
Yeah, I mean, so they have people out and leave and that type of thing, so I don't think it'd be unreasonable to go start with part-time, go a season or two. If we need to make it full-time, we can make it full-time. But, you know, just my conversation with Charlie, and Charlie's always said he'll do whatever we give him, so...
We also had the part-time land that a couple of years, it never got used, too. They never even picked one up for a couple of years, so... This last year's one, I don't know if he was hired for which department, really.
I can see making that part-time, half-time versus a full-time. And we do have some unexpected things that are going to come up the next year. I'm sure we'll have some more projects that Brandon gets us grants for that we'll have to have engineering for, so that would help with that. Anything else?
Hopefully, Gabriel's...
Comments, questions? James? Dan?
I just think we need to full-time about this, with the discussions I've had with Charlie.
I'll just add, too, that I know in talking about the fleet and the other things going on, is he reiterated again even just a week ago or so, that he needs the full-time because things weren't getting done. And I know there's still the project, but there's other ongoing things that always need to get done, and he was concerned about things getting done.
Okay. Anything else besides that?
Nope.
And besides that?
Nope.
Anything else there? Okay. All right, so I would entertain a motion, or is there a motion on the floor?
There was.
No, I have any further discussion? Okay, refreshing...
There was a motion to approve the budget.
Yep.
Made by Dan, seconded by Lonnie.
Good.
You opened it for discussion.
Gotcha.
But you still have to vote on approving the budget.
Right.
And if you vote it down, then you can amend it.
I just remember if we have the motion or the second. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget as is. I'll call up the question there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
Aye.
Motion fails two to three. I'll make a motion to approve the budget amended with a half-time position for the streets. Public works, let's see, public works, if we use them where we want to. So I've made the motion to approve the budget with a half-time public works employee addition versus the full-time. Do you have a second?
Do we want that half-time or... We want it more seasonal.
I guess that's what I look at, is seasonal, part-time, half-time, because it could be more during the...
So you're looking at it 2020 hours.
Up to a half-time, up to 0.5. So that's the motion that I've made there, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Number, letter C, approve the 2019 fee schedule. The fee schedule's in your packet. The only change on that fee schedule was a sheet that was left on your prepared, it was the CMS building official consultant and building field inspector rates per hour. Those are the only things that changed other than that, the fee schedule's the same, so all building permits and that type of thing, everything else is the same for the year, whack-a-sack fees, all the 90 things of fees that are there. I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019 fee schedule as amended with the CMS rates.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Next, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries unanimous agreement. And is that all you needed? The three of those?
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll send out the revised numbers.
Okay, thank you. Number one, under community reports, EDA Resolution authorizing return of revolving loan funds to Minnesota deed. This was approved at EDA last week, a recommendation of the council to do this. This is part of that issue, I'm not sure how much we discussed it in detail, but there was some money from all kinds of different sources over the last 30 years that went into our revolving loan fund at the EDA, and it turns out there's some funds that were not supposed to be in that revolving loan fund, so rather than have the whole thing blow up, there was $5,250 that should have been returned to Minnesota deed. So EDA is recommending to the council to do just that, so are there any questions on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing return of revolving loan funds to Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries unanimous thing. Number two, resolution for Aaron Thompson development. This was that planning and zoning on Monday night. It was recommended, it is on, you have a copy of the resolution in front of you. It was recommended by planning and zoning to come to the council tonight for approval. Conditional use permit to allow for a planned unit development at Hacks Edition, at Hacks Second Edition in Caston, Minnesota.
I have one question, just...
Yes, sir.
On number four on the back page, it says, hook-up sewer, wait, number five, I'm sorry, number five, says private drive, private water and sewer. Is it, it's not city sewer water?
It'll be a private development in the unit.
Okay, okay. That's fine, I'm thinking.
Okay, and Mr. Thompson is here tonight, too, who may be asking a question.
I just, I didn't clarify to voters.
It'll be a private, it's own private development on that property.
Looking for it.
Another question I have is, well, two of them, I guess I do. Number three, if you're in front of the seats to include letter of credit sufficient to a certain provision of the few and few, I don't know what that sort of means to be a requirement in that. Never required it before. So executive, executive development agreement, that's all.
Yeah, I have no idea. Is that part of our, is that part of our ordinance to have that known and...
We've required completion of projects when they're building city infrastructure. We've also required letters of credit if they're, were concerned about a project being abandoned midway through and we get left with a half a project. So those are the reasons that we've requested letters of credit in the past on projects. Those are kind of the two big reasons. There's not any infrastructure in this case, but there, you know, there is.
To reiterate, the only ones that we've done this with in the city that I've been in with is Ron Carlson's attempt over there, so I don't think that needs to be in there. Also, just, Dwayne, can you brief me on providing the sidewalk along the north frontage?
Because of the density that this fourplex and eightplex would bring and with the mixed use of families, seniors, we thought that it was best to add to the sidewalk to make sure that they've got a place to walk to get to the schools, particularly to the high school.
So this is on the...
It's on the south side.
South side or north side?
It's on the south side of 16th. Along the length of this property, to what extent it goes to the west, yet to be determined. It's on the south side of Sixteenth, along the length of this property, to what extent it goes to the west, yet to be determined.
Okay.
That'll all be part of the discussion with the Plumerite Platte.
And that'd be the only sidewalk on that side of the road, then, right?
No, there's some farther out. Yeah, straight across from the high school. Yep.
Just another piece.
So it's just, you got. There was a brief mention of not having it be cement, but more in line with, um, the bike trail that's on the north side. So I have it similar to that in design, again, be discussed at the Plumerite Platte.
Well, I would think that if it's, uh, something that needs to be discussed at Plumerite Platte, that should be discussed at that time, not put in, there's a stipulation on P O D. Cause we had this discussion with Rich Massey on his, of a sidewalk going over both directions. And if it wasn't put in, it would be conceived at the time of Safe Ralph's School right then. Otherwise, we won't know where it is, and if you want. I'm not gonna pick on anybody, but if you're gonna say it's for the elderly people to get to the school, where are they gonna go once they get to the end of it?
I thought we had, when we talked with the Massey project, it was possible, hopefully, is that we weren't gonna put a sidewalk there until the sidewalk would go all the way to the west.
If the sidewalk would go in, and that was the discussion at that time, was that it would be with the Safe Ralph's School project?
That was the Safe Ralph's School project, got to go on, and they called for the sidewalk on that south side of Sixteenth, and the whole thing would be put in.
It'd be put in with that project.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so you're asking that we don't require a le- letter of credit.
Right.
To assure completion of the planning and development and that, uh, I need to think about that one for a second. Um, I can see number, I guess there's two number fives also.
Well, that's why.
The second number five.
I didn't need that till I discovered that.
The first number five looks fine, uh, but maybe the second number five, I guess I would, being consistent with what we already decided for that property. In the future, there may be a need for a sidewalk there, but if I were gonna develop it, just put myself in the developer's shoes. I have nothing against sidewalks, they're for safety, but to have one block of sidewalk that doesn't go anywhere, if somebody's gonna walk on that side, they're gonna have to walk on the street, and I just about hit, you know, there's no sidewalk connecting the whole thing.
You'd rather they choose the other side to walk on.
We're going, you know, get to the corner and.
Well, do that. And plus, at planning commission level, we've asked if, if it's possible to be able to find all the areas in town that aren't missing sidewalks, that we've got sidewalks going more because of lots that haven't been developed and they've been purchased by someone next door. That doesn't, that's not required to put anything in there because of that, so.
So I can see changing that second number five to sidewalk discussion at final platte.
I just.
In conjunction with Safe Ralph's School.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't.
Cause when you go through the final platte, that's gonna be part of the discussion, correct?
Correct, yes. It would be. Um, just to clarify, some other comments about the Safe Ralph's School project, uh, this portion of sidewalk's not in the current product that we have funded for two thousand twenty-two, I believe it is. Um, so it probably will more, most likely would not be constructed as part of that project. That's not to say that we can't, give some other council direction to construct it at a later date. So maybe not something we need to resolve, but I just wanna clarify that it's not currently planned to be constructed as part of that project. And secondly, I'll maybe move to the other comments, too, since we, we are talking about engineering items regarding the development agreement and whether or not this is gonna be public or private infrastructure. There's a possibility the water main that runs through that development is ultimately gonna be public infrastructure, therefore would fall into the development, and that would likely have a letter of credit. So maybe not something we need to resolve tonight, but if we scratch that condition, we can readdress it when the development agreement is brought before the council for final approval. Again, through the preliminary plating process, review of the final construction plan, so.
So we can get the credit, letter of credit sufficient at the time we do the preliminary platte, the cover we need to cover.
Yeah, you'll have a development, you'll come to the council to keep your action.
We don't necessarily have to have it in this right here, we're not finding ourselves not having it.
Correct.
And don't we have our development agreement, basically it's now supposed to be somewhat, where anything that's private is put into the city standards, if the city ended up taking it over, so we don't run into that other problem.
Yeah, we wanna draw that line in the sand now and know what we're gonna take over, not take over, and that provisions, if it is private, to ultimately maintain private. I'm of the opinion that there's no such thing as a private water main and a private hydrant, we may have that in this condition, or this, uh, development, so just wanna have that discussion out, that may be the case, if we have a private, excuse me, a public water main that has a hydrant on the end of it, in the subdivision, therefore it would be public. Therefore, we'd likely have it in the development agreement, which in turn would have a letter of credit associated with it, but that's something we probably need to back ourselves in the corner now.
Okay, so, I guess I'd be comfortable making a motion to approve resolution approving additional use permit to allow for the planning and development. And scratch the language in parentheses on number three, the letter of credit, uh, language. Cause that'll come up at the platte, and then the second number five, I just think that could come up at the time of the platte also and not tie it to the additional use permit, so I think we can scratch that, second number five. I'll make the motion to approve, eliminating the language in parentheses on number three and the second number five.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Thank you for the planned development, and hopefully it goes well. Okay, on to number, old business number one. Excuse me. Get my, on the right page here. This was put in here, uh, two minutes ago, Koya'd asked, we see the language was presented, what was changed, that's what the stuff was put in the packet for. So there really is no decision to make tonight on the old storm water tower.
Mayor, may I, may I speak to it?
Not yet, you can't even, I apologize. Yep, you can't, uh, so back in October, we approved the order of the sign, the sign was ordered two or three days later, four days later. So we're gonna be getting something back, approved something, a sign back. At the next meeting, it was brought up that there was disagreement on what the language was changed to or from by whoever. Okay, um, I received many phone calls, emails, visits. And then at the meeting on the twenty-eighth of November, I asked, in very, pretty plain English, that both groups get together and come back with a joint recommendation on something that they both could live with. We don't have that. So that's why there's nothing to really decide tonight, because we aren't going to decide, decide that, we're gonna, we have the Water Tower Committee who can get together with Historical Society. I recommend that all the future meetings are to take, take place in this chamber, so that they're recorded. Cause I'd say I'm really disappointed and I'm very frustrated, uh, we have a lot of good people on, everybody that's involved in this has their heart in the right place, that we just aren't seeing eye to eye right now. There's just something not clicking, whatever it is, I don't know what it is. But it's really too easy and simple of a project to take this much time and to cause this much consternation amongst people who live in the same community and have, I think, the same best interests in mind. So, that being said, we're not gonna make any decisions right now, I'll talk to the city administrator in the morning, we can get approved or stopped or something, I'm just gonna, we're, we're just gonna let this thing stop for right now. I'll hear you guys in a few minutes, I'll, I'll get on to that. And then, when we can get together, cause, I mean, I'm one person, I'm one of the mayor, I don't, I don't decide everything, but we did ask at the last meeting to get together and come back with one recommendation, so we don't have to waste our time with this anymore. It did not happen. So, we do not have a recommendation that both people came back together with. Until that happens, in a recorded meeting somewhere, we really have no action to take as a council. So it'd be like somebody coming in, I'm gonna pick on Mr. Thompson, cause he's sitting right here, if he just decided to skip planning and zoning, and says, I didn't like their answer, so I'm just gonna come in to the council, and here's what I want you to do and change it, because that's what I want. We can't do that, and we have a system set up. It's not necessarily perfect, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, but I think at the end of the day, let's keep perspective on what we're, what we're talking about here. It's, uh, and we got a three million dollar levy we just passed, I like to lose a lot more sleep over that than the water tower. So, that being said, there's information in the packet that's there, some language, that type of thing. I understand we got a couple people that'd like to say a few things, we'll listen to you, we'll respectfully listen to that, if you wanna tell us what you have. But really, I need something before we can add an action item to the agenda to change something that's already been voted on, I need something that comes back with everybody on the same page. Cause I'm not a judge, and I don't think the other four people need to be put in that position either. So, that being said, if you have something you wanna share with us about the water tower.
Very, very quick, about, yes, about the tower. I'm Dave Hanson, I I'm one of the committee people. I replaced, uh, to, in the Dodge County Historical Society, Cory Berchstrom. And, uh, I lived in the county for fifty years. I, we, we met and were a bit confused that it was gonna be on there, but we're very sorry we weren't able to contact you, or, or Teresa either, except for yourself, cause he was too busy today, to know. Cause I, I, we could have turned back after hearing what you said. I, I don't quite understand, but I like the idea that you could meet, like in here, with someone who would record. Because this is what happened in the last meeting, it was a problem. Okay, cause our side was not really put in, we, we don't wanna see a mistake. You know, that thing starting three hundred thousand dollars initially, and it, we're talking twenty years, another, uh, so this, this is a big thing, a big thing. The, the water tower, uh, is a wonderful thing. To me, it's a gem of the county. I'm interested in the county, I was twenty years on the county board. I was, uh, another twenty-three years with four H and a person of the county, so I, I know the county. I was not a, I was not, before I took this position, uh, at, at Iowa State, I, I wanted to get history, and I had taken it in service in order to get through three years. So I took it when I was in the service at night school. When I came here, after the years that I've been here, fifty years, that is one of the wonders of Dodge County, Minnesota. We've got a lot of them in this county, and we wanna be sure that every one of them has a message on it that would meet the state standards. And that's what we're, we're here to talk about. We were thinking you guys are gonna pass it tonight, from what we heard from that committee meeting, and it did not have what we think it should have, so we went to a third party. We went to people who are paid to do this at the city level, uh, in the cities, and we got the response. And we have that response, but, but, let's wait for that, uh, we'll see if the other people we have on, get to the side, and I hope to hate to think aside, as you say, we're all in Dodge County. And we wanna, in fact, have, uh, one of our future things is to get a, a flyer that would go out to, on Highway fourteen to every rest stop, that would say, come to Dodge County, think of the gems we got here. The gems that lost the O G, here, with the water tower, with, was right out there on the highway, without a, a sign there, no one would know. A hundred and twenty-five thousand people went to that, um, when I was senior in high school, in nineteen fifty-two. And, and that's, that's a bump in the wall, and on the ground right now without a sign. So, that's kind of what we're after, and I like your idea, have it be something that you can read there, from, from official text, that's just great. I have the program, that's what I brought, my computer and, and a little show and tell for you guys, but let's, we'll wait. And hopefully we can come, come across the fact that the, the rules are, are that. Now, I've got them here, I mean, it's, the rule said that the, could be an agreement between the Historical Society and city council. The city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think from my part of the presentation, I, I've been working on the science and the research of creating historic markets, and I would rather, um, I would rather present this at a meeting where we can take some action.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's fine, perfect, thank you.
Could we put that on the agenda for the following meeting?
Next Wednesday?
The following, yes.
Well.
The next meeting, because.
Next meeting's one week.
The committee meetings are not effective.
Yeah, I, and I'm not trying to push you off, or, maybe we can, maybe we can't, but what, for the city council to take action, I want something back. Can I really believe that this is something that our Water Tower Committee and the Historical Society can come to some agreement on? And have a joint recommendation that says, this is what we want for the city, and we both want, and it doesn't mean, and it's never gonna be, if you ever do negotiations, there're never gonna be, I want this and I want this, it's gonna have to come somewhere in the middle.
But, Mr. Mayor, and at the last committee meeting, our members were not allowed any input, they were told how it was going to be. That's not a, a committee meeting, in my estimation.
Right, so what I'm asking for is a committee meeting here, that we can record. Cause I have to share with you how frustrated I am, cause I've heard from three or four members of the Historical Society, uh, from, from other people that were there that time, and I got kind of different things. And I, I don't know what to, you know, I, we're stuck in a position here. So I'm just asking that that happened, cause it was asked at the last meeting and it didn't. Not saying blaming anyone, I'm just saying it didn't happen, what, what we asked to have come back as a joint recommendation did not come back. So until we have that, I don't consider that we have anything to decide, and we'll just put the sign on hold until we have that.
So the committee will decide whether or not to accept the research on the science of creating historic markets. That'll be a committee decision, is that correct?
A recommendation from the committee to us, yep. Okay, thank you, Linda. Number two, Koya.
Yes, uh, I'd like to discuss the deputy fire chief position that, uh, I don't know, hasn't come about in the last five months. What's happening with that?
Um, there was a how much personal can we talk about, none?
Nothing that's private.
I don't wanna talk about any.
We don't know if the position's gonna be recommended overall, yet.
Well, I guess kinda, it's kinda one of those things I'm reiter, are going after, is that it's been since July eleventh meeting that you took it off the agenda. Haven't heard anything from anybody on what's happening with this, and, um.
I know there's discussions with the fire chief on whether the position is necessary or not.
Well, that was kinda the other thing, too, I was gonna try to get to, is that before, when Mr. Jerns was here speaking, it was a pretty necessary job, and I, I swear to God, you had to be Superman, Batman, and Spider-Man to do the job. So, and we haven't addressed it in almost five months, so. I would like some information on it at our next meeting, of what direction they're looking at. And then, I am also tired of reading at the bottom of our correspondence about how bad our fire hall is and how inadequate it is to house, house a fire department. I would like a list of repairs and reasons as to why it can't house a fire department, if there's been necessary repairs for the last, probably many years, at least two. We should have had those here, and if we haven't, and there are necessary repairs, and that's.
Okay, so you want a list, uh, cause that was in the last, what, three, four monthly correspondence, I don't know.
There's been shots, there's been shots all along.
So list us what repairs need to be made.
Yeah, no, it's not really the.
Inadequate repairs, why is it?
That it's, it's not a good fire hall, is what it is, so let's find out why it's not.
Okay.
More than just, uh, the faded paint, and if it's got a drip here and there, it's had a drip there, it should have been fixed a long time ago, and it has never been brought to our attention.
The department head knows, it's, there was a little slam in there.
Okay, alright.
And I, I'd like that next meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
On the personnel, K one, police department requests, uh, that was a request to back Bill, two part-time officers just got hired on as full-time because of retirements and resignations, that type of thing. Um, so, two people went full-time, so he's asking to replace those part-time hours with two extra people.
I see diligently cut his budget for the part-time help.
Correct. Yep, that was part of the discussions with the budget, was we'll add a full-time person, but we're gonna cut the part-time dollars.
Yep, so he did do what I said there, so.
Yep. So this is just, uh, back for those two people. So he knows his budget for the part-time, so. So he knows his budget for the part-time, so. So I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the, I don't have two part-time positions.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Attorney, nothing. Frame, I'm sorry, it's gonna be nothing to add, then. Uh, correspondence, if they may have any questions on that. Barring that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. And our next meeting, by the way, is next Wednesday. The meeting on the twenty-sixth was moved to the nineteenth back in August, or September went through then, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want, just the, I'm sorry?